Yeah, someone.
Brad, I got this.
Oh, the email?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is that what I just got on?
Something dangerous?
Oh, it was Scott one library. Brad, did I tell you I think the mouse is the culprit?
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Did you find two wires?
No, I can't find any wires.
They're buried.
Yep, I'm gonna take it in on the sixteen and have a look at it, figure it out.
You have the cover going on?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, what?
Our camber wait, I found a hole in the underneath side of our fabric on the underneath side of our camber. They climbed up on the tire and then chewed a hole in the fabric and went up into the camber. And I think they chewed some wires because my slide handle won't go out now. It'll go out if I crank it out, but not electrically, electronically like it's supposed to.
What does that through?
A mouse. Well, I'm assuming it's a mouse.
Mouse. Interesting.
Yeah.
That was scary.
We're opening with the switch.
I was hoping it was the switch too. Or a battery, but it wasn't either of those, so.
Well, manufacturer's been making wire insulation out of soy.
Out of soy?
Yeah. And a whole lot of people's been getting squirrels up under their hoods and eating the whole harness or chewing all the insulation off. It's an epidemic.
When you go camping or, you know, go up to the trails or something, you'll see people with their heads up. So it keeps the weapons out.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's not just a bunch of broken vehicles.
This is the first time we've ever had an issue. They finally got to our camber, unfortunately. Pretty good sized hole too.
Oh, really?
A hole about like that. I mean, literally right from the tire to where the fabric is. Just very small, so they easily could've stood up on their high legs and chewed, which they did, you know? Brad, just take your hand.
Yeah, right.
Too far, you know?
You up to date on your shots?
I don't know if they're worth the effort, but back to these towns, just trying to sew over.
I went for DJ the fashion show for the Salvation Army on Friday.
Oh, that sounds fun.
It was fun, took all day. So the stuff I was gonna do a regular work on Friday, I'm gonna do it five o'clock this morning.
I saw she was taking, taking.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, it's seven o'clock, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Mitchellville City Council, the order. Roll call.
Cowman.
Here.
Willamette.
Here.
Roberts.
Roberts.
Here.
Hoover.
Here.
Mayhemer.
Here. Do you stand and join me for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the tentative agenda? Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Willamette.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the council? That's not on the agenda. Next, we have Betty Becker. If you could just come stand at the podium, please state your name and address and what you would like to say to address the council.
Betty Becker. I love you, yeah.
Address.
Four twelve Long Avenue.
And you hear about a high water bill?
Yeah, I wanna see how it can be, well, there ain't no leaks.
How high, how high was the water bill?
Three hundred dollars.
Three sixty-five, sixty-three.
Three sixty, I didn't say that.
That's okay.
Three sixty-five?
Yep, three sixty-five, sixty-three is the total of the home bill, the water was one seventy-five, ninety-four.
Fourteen thousand gallons, and it's usually about a thousand. So what happened?
We had the guys go and as part after we, I gave you guys that four-page thing, we make sure to give everybody one of those, and we make the guys go in the house as well as we have the reader on the outside, so there's no conflict, the numbers match. Every time that we're there. I don't think she had a leak, because leaks aren't gonna fix themselves, and after getting her readings recently, it's clear that the water is back to an average. Something had to have been left on, there had to be extra people, I don't have an explanation, but I don't think she had a leak, but I do think the water was used.
I don't see how, there was no water in that column.
Did you have anybody, expert at home staying with you by chance?
No.
Did you have a plumber come out and let you know?
I haven't.
He went back out to normal, so I don't think he needed a plumber, probably. Did you notice by chance your toilet running, sometimes a chain can get stuck in the flapper?
No.
You didn't notice, or you, you know?
No, I didn't notice anything, it should stop each time.
We gave her the tablets we have for free for when people have high water, and she used them and she didn't notice anything. The only thing she said to us was she had her daughter and her grandson over maybe.
My grandson's over four years old.
I get that, my point is four-year-olds turn on faucets sometimes.
Well, we did, we didn't realize that was where.
Anybody want me to motion take down the action?
I'd be interested in what happened to that water.
I would be too.
But I don't know if we're gonna find out.
It doesn't look like it. It doesn't look like the council's gonna take any action at this time.
So how much do you think?
It's the three sixty-five, but if you wanna come in tomorrow, we'll talk about a payment plan for you. And what's that?
What?
Three sixty-five?
Three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
That's, yep, the mill that you received, the one that you were talking to them about, was the three sixty-five, sixty-three?
I have three hundred dollars, if I used it, I would, but I didn't use it.
Thank you.
Huh?
You're going to have to pay that bill.
I didn't understand what you said.
You're going to have to pay that bill.
I will go talk to Ronnie first.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a motion to open the public hearing for the amended budget.
Someone?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Cowman.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the council about the FY twenty-two budget amendment? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Willamette.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Next, we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two, tag twenty-nine, amending the fiscal budget ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Willamette.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Next is the approving the twenty-eight E-agreement that Derek asked that we approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, um, on this, um, formular that we got, we need it to be correct where it says Nicholas Brand is mayor.
Yes, I switched that. There were two resolutions that still had Nicholas' correct name on it, yep. The other one I had Nicholas, I think Pol- Nicholas Morrow, something like that. Sorry, I think it's just Nicholas' name down.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Willamette.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Next, we have the Resolution twenty-two, tag twenty-eight, approving the service agreement of Pol County to Blue Bayland Mill Street from Center Avenue to Elm Avenue. I know it saves us quite a bit doing it this way, and we're able to get that right.
Do we have a date when this is gonna happen?
No, it could be, that's why I put fiscal twenty-two or twenty-three, it is when they can fit us in. It's gonna be around all the other county projects. Paul was hoping it would be before July, it'll be before fall, is kind of what they're telling us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Next is silver items. Ten and eleven kinda go together, so.
For discussion purposes, yeah.
This is probably the easiest way to do it, and the way I would be supportive of is how Tammy has it presented here. I would rather use the lost funds and then only raise the water rates to three percent. I don't know, if you wanna talk more about it before.
Can I get a person second for you to open up discussion?
I'll make the motion, on second.
Tammy, did you wanna?
Um, yeah, as we know, the water fund is hurting, it's in the hole, I finally had time for the last two weeks to kind of analyze that fund and figure out what's going on, and there was seventy-eight thousand dollars improvements to the wells that were needed this year that weren't in the budget. So there, there was eighteen thousand in maintenance in the budget, so if I take that sixty thousand out of the water fund by bringing in lost money, that way we don't have to raise the water rates. Otherwise, we'd have to raise the water rates about six point nine percent to cover the fund. And keep in mind, we do have a phase three project coming up. Then if we can get our fund in a healthy balance, it will minimize how much we have to raise if, when we get to that project. So that's why I'm recommending only a three percent raise at this time.
What is that pulling, um, money away from a project, so it's capital?
The sixty thousand is coming out of the lost capital project fund. Um, if you noticed on the budget amendment, um, capital or lost money's coming in about a hundred thousand dollars more this year than we budgeted for, so we do have excess money in that fund. So we won't, it's not pulling it away from another project at this time.
Any other discussion on transferring the funds from the lost to the water fund? Roll call.
Roberts.
Yes.
Cowman.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Next is the silver approval ordinance for twenty, tag twenty-two, amending the water rates to reflect that.
Those three percent, right?
Yes.
This reflects the three percent. CPI is recommending three point nine. Uh, we raised sewer last winter when we did the legislation, so I'm recommending that we do not raise sewer fees this year. Sewer fund isn't a healthy balance. So if we get the water fund raised to three percent, then we should be set for a while.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
When was the last time we looked, we raised our water rates?
We raised them annually based on the CPI. Um, I had the screen that showed what has happened to the water fund over the last seven years, how much we raised it each year. The giant raise in two thousand and eighteen was when we started our water projects. We did not raise it when we did water phase two. We kinda piggybacked off of that big raise. I was surprised to see it was raised like way back in fourteen, almost, you know, five percent, two years in a row.
I think that's when we hooked it to the CPI.
I believe it was. Um, and then, you know, just the counterpart of this is instead of raising water, we could raise property taxes to pay the debt service when we enter phase three, so I wanted you all to keep that in mind. So I did show you what the, what has happened to the property tax levy over the last four years. Uh, we've kept it low, so that's something we'll wanna discuss when it's time, whether it would be better to raise that just slightly, put in a debt service levy, or raise water rates again if we need to for phase three.
But the water funds collecting the necessary amount to keep everyone happy with our?
With our current loans, the three percent is needed to keep the water fund healthy and, and our lenders happy, yes.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Cowman.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Next is the amended ordinance to include ATVs. Is there a motion to approve?
I approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Let's see, number six on there it says, and I think personally it could create a little bit of gray area. I think it needs to say all ATVs and UTVs need to be equipped with a slow-moving orange triangle regardless if they're crossing the street or not. I, I could see where somebody could, you know, say, well, I'm only going two doors down, or I'm only going three doors down. I think it'd be a good idea if, if we're gonna allow them on the streets, that they have, you know, the orange triangle, uh, regardless if they're crossing the street or not.
And I agree, just because if, right now when we do golf carts or UTVs, to get it permitted, period, either one of them, you have to have the orange triangle and the slow-moving flag. So if you're gonna add to that, I think whatever you add to that needs to kind of stay uniform, so it's not any more confusing when we need to make it.
I guess I didn't even notice what was written down.
Yeah, this does not have changed, the only change was adding the word ATV.
The rest.
Okay.
So our curtain ordinance read that way, so I did not change that, 'cause that was what I was talking about.
So I personally think it shouldn't say shall be required, instead shall not be required, and that's just my opinion.
So just to make sure, I understand, you're gonna remove the word not, not, correct? On number six?
If that's what you guys are, you know, are.
Shall be required.
We could, I sure could, yeah, I could change it that way.
Is that your wintry breath?
Well, I think it, I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay.
And it would, it would.
So the lawnmowers would need us lawnmowing, is that what you're saying?
It also says golf carts, ATVs, and UTVs, lawnmowers on it.
Okay, well, you just mentioned using, going three horse down on a lawnmower, so I'm trying to drift it.
No, I just mean like golf carts, ATVs, and UTVs wouldn't.
Whether you're crossing the street.
Would be required, whether you're crossing the street.
Shall be required to be a good policy.
Whether you're crossing the street or not, should have slow-moving, able to sign on.
And a bicycle safety flag, okay, thank you.
So, the motion is without that change. If you wanted to make the motion again with removing not from item six, you could, or you could proceed with how it is.
I really would urge you guys to look into some of the other codes, I have a few printed, I know I emailed you some, but I feel like this is extremely vague by just changing, just adding the word ATV to whatever is already in there. I mean, a lot of the other towns that have told me they've had zero problems with ATVs, I mean, they have specifics, where you put the sticker, what the fine is, they have in there is that if it's a, like, the police department are required to permit on it, then they're open, and they don't have to get a permit, they can still stick the sticker on there, just as well as, you know, with some more verbiage, because I just feel like this is way too vague, just adding ATV to anywhere that UTV was added.
This doesn't really say how many people can ride on an ATV, does it?
It says they have to be in a seat that's designated as a seat.
Okay.
Not for.
Yeah, then.
So are they all one-seaters or two-seaters?
There are two-seaters.
Yes, are there, okay.
It just has to be a designated riding area for them to be allowed to ride on it.
Which I think is appropriate.
So are you making your motion, are you gonna take out the not, or?
Well, what, what were you wanting to do, Brad, I'm sorry?
He wants it to have to have a flag when you go across the street.
Okay.
So basically, you could eliminate six completely, doesn't it?
Yes.
Does have a requirement of.
That was just about our street.
Okay. Take out the crossing the street, okay, I.
Do you manage your motion to revoke removing item six?
Okay.
Bill, do you still second, or who's second here?
I'm a little.
Will's.
I, I think I would like to look at those other four notices, yeah.
You guys wanna table it now?
Table it.
We, we can do that.
And I'll make you copies of these for you guys later, if you wanna do that one, but.
Where you can email them to us.
I can invite you to.
Do we need a motion to table anything, or?
You were, you, you, I kinda gotta rescind your motion, 'cause you had the motion to put it.
We're rolling it down?
Yeah.
I don't, I'll rescind it, because I don't wanna put it down.
Yeah.
I don't wanna take a motion out of them.
Yeah.
If we have to change the wording again.
And then next, Matt.
I'm gonna do my best to make a QB impression, right now, 'cause he can't be with us, so, uh, as far as the fire department goes, we are at ninety-five calls on the year. Right now, for this year, we have had more fire calls than all of twenty-twenty-one combined. So busy year for fire.
Did you say ninety-three calls?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five calls.
Thank you.
Um, as many of you have heard, we had an unfortunate incident on a call with our brush truck. Uh, it was a, a small fire, but large enough to cause quite a bit of damage to the, uh, engine compartment and vital components to that apparatus. Uh, we're working with the insurance company right now to replace that. Uh, you know, it is covered at replacement value by the insurance, so the insurance is gonna handle it all, but we're down that truck, uh, for the short term. The DNR was nice enough to loan us a nineteen eighty-six one-ton Chevy Dually, which is a pretty cool truck, if you can tell that I'm pretty excited about it. Uh, so we've been doing a lot of work to, um, get a skid unit put together so we can have a pump and water on that truck. Uh, it's very close to being in service, should be this week, so, um, good news is it's been pretty wet lately, so let's give it some time to get that apparatus up and going. So, um, that is the fire department. So Parks and Rec, uh, soccer registration's open. Uh, May fourteenth is our soccer camp at one P.M., so if you're interested in helping put on that event, get ahold of me or Ronnie, um, we definitely use some help out there, you know, out there in internet land, so if you folks wanna come help, get ahold of us. Uh, farmer's market registration's open for vendors, uh, First Market's on six-two. Uh, we are moving that to Killinger Park. We're hoping to get all those projects over there done here very soon. Uh, we have several food trucks booked, we have live music booked, uh, we have some new vendors in the works. We're going after some new vendors, so, uh, we're pretty excited about Farmer's Market this year. Uh, Rise and Grind is, the registration for that's now open, there's, uh, forums out here in the lobby. Party in the Park Carnivale is the theme this year, June third and fourth. Um, we have talent contest, pet show, Mike Moody and the Outlaws, DJ Jeff Bags Tournament. Um, you know, uh, some great food, a lot of fun attractions, and we're, we're really looking forward to this this year. So, uh, make sure you mark your calendars for that. Fire Department Five K's gonna be on that Saturday. Uh, a lot of, uh, interactive challenges to channel your inner firefighter that day as well. It's gonna be a lot of fun. Uh, we have a ton of work still going on at Killinger Park, the, uh, shelters are here, the footings are being poured hopefully this week, depending on weather. Um, once the footings are in and all the inspections are done, uh, I'll put out a public call to action for, uh, a date in the very near future to assemble those shelters, so we'll be looking for that to come out on Facebook. Um, we'll take all the help we can get on whatever day we sort out. I'm looking at probably a Saturday sometime, that's when the most people are available, so, um, we still have a little bit of dirt to move for the flower bed as soon as we can get that done, weather permitting. Uh, the Beaver Hustlers Four-H Group will be along to help plant all our new flowers. Um, we've had a ton of flowers donated, um, from Marley and Olson, and we also went to the Enabling Garden Plant Sale in Altoona, and Magellan Corp. was good enough to, uh, give us some money and purchase, uh, a whole bunch of plants from that sale as well. So all that stuff's gonna be going in the park, um, so we're really excited about it. And that's about it, guys, you have any questions for me, anything like that?
Are there any updates on the state? Any updates on the state?
It's built.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the rest is up to me. The, getting that dirt reworked, backfill, um, fresh topsoil and then reseed with grass, uh, landscaping around the side, um, some steps into the hill for that. Uh, the picnic table pads need to re, uh, backfill, seed, you know, all that, but a lot of that dirt work that needs done is, is weather-dependent, so, you know.
I'm a big, big foodie, Matt, and I know you were looking for some food trucks, uh, for the park. Have you, were you able to get ahold of any others and?
Yeah, we have, uh, we have several that were in that thread on Facebook, uh, we've reached out. Uh, some of them have got back to us, uh, so I can't, I can't say I can't, but I don't remember at the moment who all I got booked, I have a, a volunteer helping organize all that right now. Um, but just today, we booked several trucks for several events, so it's kinda all, all fresh.
Nice.
So I'll have better information later when I get it all sorted out, because people were, you know, pretty much toppling over each other to get their pick of dates, so, which is a good problem, Matt.
Yeah, absolutely.
Question? Um, Matt?
Yeah.
For the farmer's market, what are you thinking about? How many fire trucks are, where are they gonna be sitting, are they gonna be on the street, or on which street, or where are you thinking about putting them?
For the, the?
For the farmer's market? The, the food trucks that come?
The food trucks. Um, I'm probably gonna have them set up either at the far end in one of the first parking stalls or on Third.
Okay, like facing the park?
Yes.
Okay, not the street, of course.
Yes. Yep. So, you know, since it's new up here, we're gonna have to play with, you know, where we set. So, you know, since it's new up here, we're going to have to play with, you know, where we set things up and whatever works the best with the best flow.
Ellen?
Um, the Lidera roof will be going on in a couple months, Stewartson's going to do that. Walsh is putting in our door next week, and we're waiting for our siding to come in, that'll be done in a couple months. And then they're going to power wash it, all the rocks, all that stuff. Our live, our summer reading program is then started, and we're ready for that in June, and that's probably about it.
Ronnie?
Um, last week I got to go to court for my first time ever to deal with the nuisance, we never made it that far, usually something, somebody concedes or but, I mean, really, we didn't do anything, we didn't, they agreed to give a medical inspection in two weeks, so now we wait for the two weeks. So with that, the reason that the closed session was removed, Michael didn't feel like he needed to be here. We were going to discuss a couple of the trailers, which, both of which, they were in violation of rental inspection by not getting one and not being the owner that lived in it, but since then, the owner, who is not the owner of both trailers, has since sold the trailer to somebody else, so that is a whole new can of worms, so we have decided to open that way rather than continuing with rentals. Other than that, last week I drove around on, like, one day, it was nice, and got a lot of a big list of nuisances, obviously not so much mowing yet, but junk, junk vehicle, stuff like that. But with cleanup day being this Saturday, I'm going to wait and go to send out letters until next Monday, because usually we like to send out a letter a week later, tell people, hey, they're not going to take your washing machine, and do something like that anyways. So look for a big push-in nuisance and junk, junk car vehicle cleanups in the next week.
Tammy?
The last two weeks, there's been a park meeting, elaborate board meeting that I attended. Tree Board is finally going to meet on May eighteenth, we finally have a Tree Board meeting. I will send a reminder for you to, well, the week before. I spent the last two weeks just playing with the numbers and the budgets, had my head in spreadsheets for two weeks, so I'm glad we everything got through it, and I think that's all I have, we got pansy next week. That's all I have for tonight.
Will?
Um, I just wanted to thank everybody that participated in the Jags hockey softball tournament over the weekend, it was a really good event. I know the kids had a blast, and, yeah, look forward to it, thank you.
Brett?
I don't have any.
Bill?
I'm sorry, I was last meeting, I was on fire call, and we had a short meeting, and I got back, it was over. And everybody, take full advantage of the cleanup Saturday.
Um, I just had a question. Last meeting, when we were talking about just the open discussion on ATVs and things, Derek mentioned that our inadequate lighting and some roads on some of our streets. Can we, is there anything we can do to get our streets not to be in an inadequate situation where we have some more street lighting brought in for us?
You can file a request with them, and, I mean, we can file it as a city, honestly, as a resident, when, like, over kind of my year of house, that light had always been there. I got further being a resident and filling out the streetlight request than I've ever been being the city clerk and asking them to put in more lights, so.
And who would fill those out with that?
If you just go to Mid-American, or if you go to our website.
There's a link.
There's a link to request a streetlight repair installation, the whole nine yards.
Well, then I think it's really important that our residents are realizing that if you feel that your street, you know, is dark or is listed as an inadequate lighting situation, then maybe we try to get some additional lights.
Same with if you ever see one flickering or completely out, you can just fill it out online, and they're really responsive.
Safety thing too, so it'd be a good, definitely a good idea.
That's fine.
The only thing I have is I attended the MLA Part Three Municipal Leadership Academy with Brad, not this last weekend, but the weekend before. That's really all I have.
Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to adjourn.